We're going to call to order the special agenda budget workshop for Lander County Commissioners Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners, April 1st, 2019. And no, this is not an April Fool's joke. We are actually here and ready for business.
Far from it.
Congrats. Would you all join us, please, in the silent parking lot? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well. Thank you. And now if I may remind you to please mute your cell phones and then join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and welcome everybody. The Lander County Commissioners may be at for lunch from 12 noon to 1:15 PM, which I'm going to ignore.
You talked about that.
I can ignore the agenda, right? Any agenda item may be taken out of board or may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We are into public comment, which is for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Is there any public comment to start with this afternoon? Okay. And we will start out with the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine. It may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one, approval of April 1st, 2019 agenda notice. Number two, approval of February 28th, 2019 special meeting minutes. Number three, approval of March 14th, 2019 meeting minutes. And number four, approval of March 28th, 2019 meeting minutes. And we have no minutes, so it would be a motion to approve number one, the agenda notice.
So moved.
Thank you, Judy.
I'll second it.
And Kathy seconded. Albo is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, being opposed? Thank you. Now, the changes to the fiscal year 2019-2020 recommended annual budget is prepared by the fiscal officer. It's what we are doing today, and we start with under the Commissioners' area. Number one, discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove. A, the wildland fire protection contract is currently being paid from the Battle Mountain Fire Department, 001-017 budget. I would like to request that it be moved to the county manager, 001-005 budget. B, requesting to remove the $16,000 for the Humboldt River Authority and $16,000 for the Central Nevada Water Authority from the budget, 001-035. These expenditures are being paid for the Commissioners' dues and subscriptions line. C, requesting an increase to the ag extension fund, 005, of $20,000 for weed control. D, requesting to review the decision on the county employee bonuses for $107,000 and all other matters properly related there, too. So we will talk about all of these under the number one agenda. Okay, starting with number one. This is just strictly moving it. That's per your request?
Yes, that is mine. Currently, it's in the Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department fund, but whenever that quarterly payment comes up, it does come to me. The contract comes to me for review, and then I'll go to the District Attorney's Office for review. So I, it's just, if it's under my line item, I mean, it doesn't, it's not taking anything away from the Fire Department. I spoke with Ron about it. He's fine with it. So I'm just asking that it be moved from Battle Mountain Volunteer to under the county manager budget. And next Thursday on the 11th, there was an act, I have a contract here, there was actually, actually an increase in the budget, or in the contract, but we can talk about that next week. So they'll actually have, we'll have, we need to put $58,044 additional. It comes out to $208,044.
I'm just wondering, when I look at a county manager budget, that I really don't necessarily think of, you know, that wildland fire protection under there. I don't want it so convoluted. I mean, but, but you want to bring those things under your budget instead of the Fire Department. I can see doing that, but I'm wondering if there's another department and why.
So you can put it, you can leave it where it's at. I'm just saying, it would be easier to put it under my budget, since I'm actually responsible. And it's a countywide contract. It's not a Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department contract.
Right, right. No, I understand moving it from the Fire Department. I just wondered where else we could move it. And I, like I said, I think of, if I dump all those things under a county manager, would it be too convoluted with all of?
Well, it'll have its own line item.
Of course. No, I understand that. I just, you're.
It's not just bulking it in anything, but.
Well, if the bill comes to Keith, why wouldn't he have the money to pay for it? I mean, I don't understand the rub there.
It's, it's just currently, when it comes, I go to the Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department budget, and it's coded to the Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department, which really isn't.
No.
Part of their, their budget.
Cindy?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So you would create a separate line item on your budget for that?
Right, yeah. Well, yeah, Cindy and I spoke about it.
Okay.
And that's what we would do, if it's approved.
I mean, it would be clear enough under there. I'm just thinking of how many things you're going to have under a county manager. And I, it is a contract, and it's an annual contract. If we approve it, it can be paid under there. Any other recommendations of another fund we should put it under, or?
We could put it under 001-035. Can't remember what, exactly what it's called at the moment. Other expenses for the general fund, I believe is what it is. We could put it there.
That is, yeah, other general expenses.
Sorry, Cindy Benson for the record.
Cindy, do you have a preference of where it should go?
As long as it's got its own line item, so we can track it.
Doesn't really matter?
It doesn't really matter.
You know, actually, if you look at that item, that department item, 035, it probably would make sense to put it under that one, because each, each individual one is separately kind of itemized for something. There is a line item for emergency management also.
It's county, it's county, like county credit cards, but it's county expenses.
Do we pay any other contracts out of that fund?
I believe we do.
China Springs?
Yes.
We got our insurance fire liability. The water authority boards, both of them. Physicals, computer services.
It's your pleasure just to have us to go through A, B, C, and D, and then just make one motion to be on, when we?
Should we just do each one individually?
Yeah, because they're all kind of together. I'm just moving things around, so.
Okay. Does anybody care where it goes?
Okay, I'll move to number B. Moving the $16,000 to the Humboldt River Authority and the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority from the budget 35, where we had it. No, you want to move it there. And we've had it right now under our subscription line for Commissioners?
I was taking it out of 001-035, because for the last several years, it's been coded to the Commissioners' dues and subscriptions.
Well, I think that's a good place, and we've got it with our fire protection.
Okay, we can leave it there.
Because I was going to say that it is actually under dues and subscriptions under the Commissioners. We're, we're over budget on that anyway, so we'd have to increase that line item or to swap it, so.
No, that was, that was including it.
No, I was looking at year-to-date is. So if we just leave it alone, then, so long as we. And on that, I'd ask you, I thought we were only paying $10,000 a year. Did you check to see if it was, because we've got $16,000 budgeted?
I did. I didn't write down the amounts, but I could, I could get it.
Because I, for some reason, I just keep thinking that we're only paying $10,000 per authority. And I could be wrong on that, but.
Okay, number C.
Has your, has something to say?
Oh.
Is it 16,000 or 32,000?
It's 16 for each line item, so it's 32,000.
Thirty-two, okay.
And like Judy said, it may not be the full 16. That's just what was budgeted last year for it.
Okay, requesting an increase to the ag extension fund, 005, of $20,000 for weed control. And where did we put that $20,000 for weed control?
Normally, it would be in Burt's.
Yeah, normally, it's, it's included in Burt's budget, in the Public Works budget, uh, Rhode Island Bridge, I guess, budget. But there's, there seems, there's always confusion with it, because the ag uses it, and then, or they, they want to take out of it. So we're not, it's not really an increase, I wouldn't say. I think we're just moving it from Burt's or from.
It would be an increase, because Burt did not want to give up any of the money.
Well, I.
But we could still take it.
I mean, he's been giving it to him for all these, I just texted him. I'm not sure. I thought he was going to be here.
I've got some questions on this stuff, so I need him here.
So I have a question on that. Regardless if he wants to give it up or not, if the $20,000 isn't for projects, and it goes specifically for that, then the $20,000, I would say, if we're moving it, needs to be removed from his account, but from his budget, because that $20,000 has been set aside for this. That's going to be my suggestion.
Okay, now, I'm confused, because I thought, I thought we have money in the budget for weed control for us, and that was what Burt had. This $20,000 that we're looking at for the ag, that's the one.
It's an additional, right?
Well, they're adding on now, because he, originally, it was put into his fund to be used for weed control.
For us.
For, yes, to be put in. So now, for, to be utilized for us, like it has been in the past, correct? When it's being paid, it's not being paid out of his budget?
Weed control is under his budget line item at the, at the moment.
Okay, so for us, I don't understand what.
For the county.
For, for county-wise?
Yes, yes.
So there's one in the north, and then there, he has some in the south, too, for, like the airport, things like that.
He does have money under weed control.
Yes.
There's $12,000 in the south, $20,000 in the north.
Yes.
That's 32.
But, okay, so those, those are left, and those are the same. Now, we're just asking for an additional $20,000 to go to the ag for them doing.
No.
Like grants out to the, to the ranchers or something.
Why don't we let Shannon explain it?
Yes. Hi, Shannon Verman. Okay, so, way back when, however long it's been, when Donnie was in Rhodeen Bridge, he had provided, and this is separate from cooperative extension, to the Conservation District, $15,000 in chemical money for weeds spraying. So there was a $20,000 budget in the Rhodeen Bridge, but $15,000 of that would go to the Conservation District when we would submit after we had done weed spraying projects.
And does that match, like, with the different ranchers and such?
No, so it's not a cost share. That is specifically for projects that the Conservation District does. For instance, Ferris Creek, we've been spraying last year, and we'll be spraying again this year. And then, when the sprayer comes out and they bill us for the, the chemical, that's where that money comes from, is out of that budget. So.
Okay, so, so everybody else is the same with county, and we just didn't put any money in for the weed control for it?
So, yeah, so now this, now, now, because Burt doesn't want it in his budget any longer, and I talked to Cindy about this, putting it into Cooperative Extension's budget, and then the Conservation District will then just ask Cooperative Extension, which would be me.
So it's no new money. It's just a transfer. Because I do remember him saying that he wanted it out of his budget.
Yeah, so I don't know if Burt's left any other funds in his own budget for, for spraying projects, but, yeah, he wants that 20 that he was giving us last year and this year to be in a different budget area, so he doesn't have to worry about it.
So Keith, is he not?
Fifteen minutes.
Keith, so you were saying he doesn't want to take that, you were saying this is going to be an extra 20, because he wants to keep that $20,000 in his budget?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that's, so he wants to keep that in there, and then we come up with another $20,000.
Yes.
Now, is he doing weed abatement?
He does have different areas that he does weed abatement. Airport's one of the biggest, bigger ones that he does the weed abatement on when he gets overgrown. You know, and then the different weed, the rodeo grounds around town, the buildings, so forth.
But it's going to cost us $20,000 more a year to be doing this weed abatement?
I, I would have to refer, I don't know what he actually spends on weed abatement.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question like Kathy's. When you got, when ag department sprays, where do you spray for weeds?
So the Conservation District has projects that they come up with, like Ferris Creek has an entire area of tall white top.
You're out of town.
It's over, it's about 200 acres. It's in, within the county.
Within the county, but out of the town.
Right. Unless Burt, well, in the past, like, Donnie would say, hey, we can't get to this road out there. If you guys are doing a project out there, can you spray up the road, or something like that?
Oh, yeah, I don't see any problem with that.
So we would work cooperatively, but for, for, it's mostly for larger projects. Like, there's 200 acres of tall white top in Ferris Creek that we're trying to eradicate.
Now, Keith, do we have a sprayer, and we spray? Yeah, we do, don't we?
Well, we, I believe that it belongs to.
Well, I believe the county has a sprayer as well, but we, the Conservation District, has a 300-gallon spray tank that we use for other smaller projects, or that we rent out to people, and we cost share with them. But for larger projects, like the Ferris Creek, we actually hire a contract sprayer to go out, and we have other funding from different places that we, that we pay for that. It's just not the chemical. That's where we use this 20, 15 to 20,000, is for the chemical portion of that.
Okay. So the Burt's budget is used mostly for in-town, in places, and a good example is the pack-out parking lot. We would take care of that.
But in the past, it did come out of his budget to do these things.
Yeah, in the past.
I understand that. I understand.
In the past, Burt had, they had kind of split that, and, like I said before, Donnie as well. They would keep like 5,000 and use that and give us 15. Like, last year, Burt didn't expend any of that portion, so he had given us the full 20, which we're in the process of trying to expend that, the rest of that, before the end of the budget cycle.
Okay, are we, are you okay with that? Do you want us to hold up? Are we okay? All right.
Somewhat clear, but.
Okay.
As long as the two, Burt and.
So now the CD will just be requesting it from Cooperative Extension's budget, rather than from Burt's budget.
So that he still wants the $20,000 in his budget, so it's costing an extra $20,000 a year?
Yes.
Yeah.
And originally, I didn't want, I, I was, my understanding of it was that $20,000 was specifically for the Cooperative Extension. That's why I was against not moving it, or moving it and then giving another 20. But it's, it's a little more, there's a little more to it.
Yeah, Cindy, okay. Number D, requesting to review the decision on the county employee bonuses for $107,000. We had originally turned this down, and.
Yes, yes.
Well, that's contractual, isn't it?
No, 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 no.
Not the bonuses, no, they are not.
That's not in a contract?
No. We specifically left it out of the contract, so that it could be discussed annually by the Commissioners.
And in the budget meeting, we turned it down, because we were doing the two and two.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
So we're going to do this under policy?
No.
No, it's just on there for us to turn down or accept it.
Annual review, like the.
By the Commissioners.
By the Commissioner, for, no matter what else is going on, you've established an annual review for this particular item. That's my understanding.
Just out of curiosity's sake, and I don't recall, because there was so much going on, that we did turn this down previously.
Yes.
Is, why is it back on then?
That was my question. Yeah. So several employees have approached me and asked me about it, and they're not here, so. But they asked if it could be revisited by the Commission and discussed.
Okay.
There we are.
So that, that's how it got back on the agenda. It was, it was a request from several, not, I'm not saying it wasn't like the whole county came to me, but there were several employees that came and asked about it.
And I think there was a justified, or reason, why we decided to not include it this year in the.
Okay, yeah.
In the budget.
Well, the only comment that I have about bonuses is, it, it's nice to give somebody a bonus, but by the time they get money on their check, it's not very much. Most of it goes to taxes. So if there were another way that we could approach this, I'd be all, all in favor of it. But when I hear people talk about, well, I got a $10,000 bonus, and by the time I got it on my check, I got like $5,200 or something, 40% right off the top, and then it goes into their other money, and it gets taxed again.
I'd still take it. It's like winning the lottery. I mean, it's always nice to have something.
If I won 100 million, I'd gladly give 40 to the winner.
That's right. See, so it isn't what the, what the total was. It's like, golly, I have this, I wouldn't have.
Free beer in Lander County for life.
Well, let's see if we can do a motion without, or we may or may not agree, and we might have to split them, so.
I'll make a motion. Item number A for wildland fire protection, that we put that under Fund 001-035. Item number B, we move the Humboldt River Basin Water Authority and the Central Nevada River Basin Water Authority, Central Nevada River Water Authority dues. We leave that in the line item that it's at.
Excuse me, we're doing a line item on, what, 35?
It's, yeah, it's already in, we're going to leave it where it's at.
On 35, okay. Thank you.
See, I would move to approve 10,000 for weed control. And D, we stand by our decision not to include bonuses in this year's budget.
I, I didn't hear you.
We don't offer budgets, I mean, bonuses.
Bonuses.
I'll second the motion.
Oh.
Okay, are we clear on the motion? Everybody understands that, what we're doing then? Okay, made by Judy, seconded by Brian. Any other discussion on it? Any public comment? Albo's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, I've got these.
Art? Are you voting?
I'm gonna, yeah, just give me a second. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote with the quorum on this, but there are some things that I don't like. The first thing I don't like is, well, I'd give them 20,000, and I would look into bonuses, but aye.
So noted. Thank you. It is unanimous. We move on to Fund 236. Number two, discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove. A, requesting to add the 72-acre wetlands project to the sewer projects. The total amount of all sewer projects stays the same. The project just did not get listed on the Budget Workshop Agenda, and all other matters properly related there, too.
But we don't have a total. How much is this project?
The wetland one?
Yeah.
The 72-acre wetlands, that's you?
You.
So the total for the sewer, well, let's see, for the wetlands is 742,500. But it was already included in the total I gave you at the Budget Workshop. It just, the listing just didn't make it on the page.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so we didn't have it listed anywhere, so now it's just going to be listed under sewer, which is where it should have been listed, and we just missed it. Okay.
And that can come out of sewer fund, the N S.
I know you explained this before, so could you explain it to me, just a quick summary?
Sorry, sorry, guys, for being late. The wetlands out here, so now, with infiltration and the state's requirements tightened up on the sewer plants as well, we went back to a wetland, so we can discharge to the river for six months, and we can discharge to a wetland, an area that contains the water, and it, you know, like a septic system almost. It goes into the ground that way, and a lot of evaporation, to comply with the state's regulations.
Okay, so the, the ponds we have out there presently, that's 72 acres?
No, them, them, them are just line-holding ponds, but it'll be overflowed from that.
So you need to build some.
Yeah, so them are just settlement ponds, so, so sledge goes out and settles in there, and then the clear liquid will fall out into the wetlands, and that's where it'll.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So on the project, what, what do you do? How do you, you know, build these to contain it, so that you can get the, the evaporation, you know, the holding, and then, you know, hopefully, it'd be nice if, if you could have wetlands year-round. I know it's not, I feel realistic, but how do, how do you hold it? How does it stay there?
That's what the money's for, is the levees that.
No, that's what I'm asking, is what, it's, you build levees, is?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then they're, you know, endow, they have you put fish and everything, eat mosquitoes, and then you have plants that uptake nitrates, and it, all the way around, it's supposed to be a better system for the.
So if they, if they plant the fish, then we're hoping it's going to be year-round?
Yeah. And, and, and when I say fish, they're like, they're little tiny fish that eat mosquito larvae.
Oh, well, yeah, any kind of, but they still eat water, so.
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay, so we need to clean this up administratively. I'm waiting for a motion.
So I'll add, add the 72-acre wetlands project to the sewer projects in the amount of 742,500 dollars, not to exceed.
Thank you, Brian. Judy made the motion, we'll quickly move it over to the sewer projects, and Brian seconded. Any other discussion? Any public comment? Albo's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Fund 55, capital construction project requests rollovers, that were not on the Budget Workshop Agenda. The total of all projects is 65,191,986 dollars. Estimated beginning CCP budget is 14,179,460 dollars. Revenues estimated at $22 million, which would allow for up to $36,179,460 in expenditures. Okay, so that's our information as we go into number three, discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove. A, maintenance, Town of Austin Streets, which is a rollover, in the amount of 658,944 dollars. B, Eisenhower Antelope Valley Road Project rollover in the amount of 279,101 dollars. And C, the Frontage Road between Second and Third Exits rollover in the amount of 1 million dollars, and all other matters properly related there, too. So these are just strictly our rollovers that have already been approved.
Yeah, so, Burt, aimless for the record, again, we will have the Town of Austin maintenance done before July 1st, so we don't have to worry about rolling that one over. The Eisenhower Antelope Valley project, we're going to use a small amount of that, but we don't have to worry about rolling that over. We'll only do a one-mile section on each, and kind of as a test run, and I'll come back to you guys in next year's budget, see how that worked out for us, and if we need to, we'll budget for more, and if it, if. worked out for us, and if we need to, we'll budget for more, and if it, if not, I don't wanna waste it, you know?
Okay, so you wanna just use some of that 279,000, and what you don't use goes back in general?
Yep.
Okay, we'll talk about the rest next year.
So Bert, what what is that project? Is that the mag fluoride?
Yeah, it's a it's a type of mag with, I think, when I, when we presented it, has that polymer in it, like a plastic that's supposed to bind everything. But with it being what it is, and nobody around us really using it yet, I don't wanna dump it all at once. So if we give it, if we give it a year, then that that'll be, you know, a full-year cycle to see what it really does or doesn't do, then we'll go from there.
Did you wanna decrease it?
And then, no, we'll just come back with a whole separate budget. And then the Frontage Road, if you guys, if that project goes through, then whatever, I think that's part of that contract to pave that Frontage Road as well.
We kinda have to roll that one over.
Okay. Entertained a motion on number three, Ben, for C.
I'll approve the rollover budget items as presented.
One second.
Judy made the motion, Brian seconded, we rollover the Frontage Road, number C. Any other discussion? Public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Fund 55, capital construction project requests and rollovers approved at budget workshop. Discuss reducing project costs to stay within budget.
Which one of these did you recommend, Bert? Could you go down the list and tell me so I can strike them?
Okay, so A is one that we're under contract for, we have to roll it over.
Okay.
Um, wait, wait just a minute.
Needs to be read into that.
I need to read them all into.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
I mean, it's a start.
If you raise your hand when when it's something that you put in there, then I'll know.
You raise your hand, and he can mark it. Okay. Number four, discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove. A, Airport Water Project rollover in the amount of 2,142,433 dollars. B, Flood Levy Project rollover in the amount of 7 million dollars. C, Engineering Fees rollover in the amount of 300,000 dollars. D, White Knife, New Water Main, Wraparound Casino rollover in the amount of 1,966,195 dollars. E, Water and Sewer District Number Two Project rollover in the amount of 2,600,000 dollars. F, Spurline Railroad rollover in the amount of 50,000 dollars. G, New Battle Mountain Fire Station in the amount of 7 million dollars. H, New Austin Fire Station in the amount of 7 million dollars. I, New Civic Center in the amount of 5 billion dollars. J, Gravel Pit Park in the amount of 5 billion dollars. K, Industrial Park in the amount of 15 million dollars. L, Sidewalks East, First through East 8th Street in the amount of 1 million dollars. M, Crush Rock in the amount of 100,000 dollars. N, Yellow Brick Road Paving in the amount of 515,625 dollars. O, Sheep Creek Road Paving in the amount of 267,188 dollars. P, Paved Casey Road to Round Mountain Road in the amount of 412,500 dollars. Q, Singer Center Paved Parking Lot in the amount of 50,000 dollars. R, Old 8A Road in the amount of 4 million dollars. S, Flipbridge in the amount of 3,500,000 dollars. T, Sports Complex in the amount of 100,000 dollars. U, Emergency Project Line in the amount of 250,000 dollars, and all other matters properly related there, too. Okay, so we have to start cutting on some of these, and you said, these are the ones we all approved, and we're how much over budget? How many million?
About 29 million, isn't it?
Yeah, it's right at, right at close to 30 million dollars.
So basically, we have to, we can start from G down, because everything above is a rollover.
Let me ask a question before we started, because I don't remember where we put it, but we were talking about the R and D fund, and now we asked for 15 million, and we had that. How how did we do that? That was, I thought that was part of it. Did we have it somewhere else?
It was in the 55, in Fund 55, and you specified you wanted it out of the general fund, so being as it was approved, I left that part in there. I didn't take it out to put on here, so it's already approved. You approved it on the last commission meeting.
Okay.
Or not the commission meeting, but the last budget workshop.
Yeah, the workshop. Okay, I couldn't remember where we took it out of, but I thought it was part of the CCP that we took it out of.
It was there, but you said you wanted it to come out of Fund, the general fund.
Okay, so it's already out. Or do, or is it further? Okay, but at least it's not in here, so, okay. So that reduced its sum, is what what I'm saying. Okay.
Did it, so is is that 15 million part of the 29, or not?
No.
Okay, so, okay.
That was up above.
Okay, I got it.
That was like 36 million with that. Okay, all right. So go ahead. We'll start with the Airport Water Project, and that's a full rollover, so is there any problem with that amount?
We have to keep that one.
Flood Levy Project, that's a rollover. We have to do that the same on the rollovers, right?
We have to keep that, because.
We don't have to keep that one.
I have some questions on that.
We don't have to.
We could lower the amount.
Did you recommend that, Bert?
Oh, okay. So I I've actually recommended that we reduce that by 2 million, as well as on next week's commission agenda, Tom Gallagher will be here to discuss the levy project and see what the commission has has to say about it.
Okay, so you want the 7 million down to 5 million, you think is appropriate, and if we find out it's not, we'll have to bounce it back up on our last workshop when we approve it, right?
It should be, it should be.
Well, it isn't a workshop. We just approved the budget, but we could make changes, is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll reduce it to five and see if if that works okay with our next meeting and the amount of money we have pledged.
So, never mind. Go ahead. No, never mind.
Okay. Engineering fees, that's a rollover of 300,000, and engineering fees were for?
They're just for random fees, like for random projects that come up throughout the year, like the Austin, that retaining wall that we put up, we had no budget for, but we used it out of the, all the engineering, you know, with engineering was done for that, and the soil samples. So it's for random projects that come up throughout the year that are unexpected.
How much did we use last year in engineering fees that we're surprised? We can probably reduce that some.
Let's see, I'm not sure how much we used last year. So far this year, we've used 65,000.
So on these rollovers, I mean, granted, some of them, you know, the Airport Water Project rollover, the Flood Levy rollover, those are understandable, because they're kinda still a work in progress. But some of these other ones, I'd really like to to not see so many rollovers that, these projects need to be done within the year. You know, if the budget year starts July 1st, the project should be done by June 30th, that we shouldn't have to roll these over. Because I would just like to see they're completed.
You're saying that's a general statement?
As a general statement.
Okay, well, let's start with, let's see on the engineering fees. How much do you wanna roll over?
Well, if they only use 60, what, you said 65, why don't you put 150?
150?
Uh huh.
If it's possible with that. Okay, we'll start with that. Okay, on the White Knife one, we don't know what's happening.
Yeah, it's in progress right now. That's the project that's in progress.
They're working on it. So when are they gonna be done, do you know?
Well, we're, can't give it an exact date, but it should be real close. It's gonna be right on, right in the ballpark. The the good thing about it is, if you roll it over, the money goes back into the general fund. The the unused portion does, you know.
It does anyway. Well, it doesn't go into the general fund, it goes back into the Fund 55, where you don't use.
The problem, though, is is because.
Without without knowing the exact amount, it's really hard to put this on here where we stand.
Okay, let's let's leave that one for right now and see how, if we can cut some some others in balance, we can always come back to that. Let's leave that one alone, okay? Water and Sewer District Number Two, this was the original amount that we were gonna use this year when they opened up Highway 15, came through, and they they didn't, they endot, delayed it for another year. So it looks like they're on target for next year. Now, what we do with that is another whole system, but we're gonna at least need the 2,600,000 next summer when they open it up, it looks like.
Or more.
I was gonna say, is it gonna go up?
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah.
Well, and then we've got the sewer, and they're asking for more money on the rest. So if we can leave that rollover alone, I'd like to leave that one alone.
Me, too.
Okay, then we're down to Spurline Railroad rollover. Okay, that's only 50,000 dollars.
Is that still a possibility?
Uh, you know, it, the land we were looking at was in private hands, and I I don't think it's gonna happen, but that's just my my opinion of it. So if that, if you guys wanted to take that out.
You know what this is, Brian?
Yeah, yeah, I say cut it.
Kathy, do you know what this is?
I don't. I don't know what it is.
Explain it to Kathy, so she knows.
Should we do that? It's a litigation thing, or do we close the session?
It it has to do with with our, with our problems with a private developer by the airport.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Now I know, I know what you're talking about.
So we don't know if we should bring it up in in in.
Okay, no, and I know, because when we were talking.
But if we if we just delete, it's not a law, but if we just delete it, it comes up, we look at it as a special, you know, that's all. So let's just take it off.
All right, very good.
It comes up, we'll just take it out of case professional services.
Okay. Okay, you've got two. I'm here for the Battle Mountain Fire Station, which they are thinking about, and the New Austin Fire Station, which we are thinking about, and I'm going, well.
Okay, so these are anywhere from three to five-year projects. They are not, they weren't supposed to show as the entire estimate of the project. I I, if the board would like to go ahead with any of any of the proposed projects, all I would need is the money to actually look into it, and to get some engineering costs, and to come back with you, to you with a solid number on what it's gonna cost. But these were all laid out over three to five years.
Do we wanna do them both, or do we just wanna tackle one at a time?
And and that's completely up to the board. I I put in there, like I, when I originally put this into the budget workshop, it had to do with discussions during the last commission, and I just wanted to see which way that that you guys wanted to go.
I think we should leave some in there for seed money, so that, you know, if we do decide, in two years, instead of taking out 20 million dollars for a project, you know, you're kind of building it up every, in a couple of years, so that it's not one big chunk at once. So I think a little bit into each one of these, like you said, is allow enough for for some engineering or investigative costs or whatnot, but I still think, kind of put some aside for the future, so you're not just cutting yourself short.
So define a little bit, what are you thinking, a million bucks?
No, I was thinking a little bit more, actually.
But if you're gonna put it aside, so you have it, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
We've got 29 million to cut, remember, so.
Well, I I know, and and so, you know, a couple millions for each are.
So that would cut.
Okay, but what's the worst that can happen if we don't tackle it this year, we look at it next year, we see where we are?
Can I, I think the email I sent to you is is we.
Yes, I'll suggest it.
Some recommendations. So for any of those big projects like that, which would be the fire stations, the civic center, gravel pit, whatever, whichever, I think if if the commission was to put, was to approve it and put 100,000 dollars in it, then I could come back and say, okay, we've got some engineering fee or cost, some costs for the entire project, and this is where we wanna put it, wherever it may be, whatever location. Then I can, then that way, you guys will know, the board will know, that the fire station in Battle Mountain's gonna be 5 million dollars, say. Then we can start that three to five-year process, or you can say, all right, well, let's build it. On any of these these big ones that I put forth, it's, the intent was to see if you wanted to continue forward with it, and then to see the actual cost.
Yeah, get some real numbers.
And then we could look at three to five-year plans for these these projects.
And the nice thing about these projects is they can't be taken away from us once they're completed.
Right, that that's correct. And the one exception to that will be the industrial park. That that one, we were, we would probably be looking at some substantial money, maybe a two-year project in that, and I believe our initial figures were 15 million. We're running it right at 15 million. So that's, that one, actually, the industrial park is is pretty accurate. We did get a, did some research on that.
But if it's a two-year project, we we don't have to give you, give the whole 15.
That's correct, yeah, that is correct. You could go 7.5 and 7.5, or however the the board wanted.
I think the best would be to put the engineering and getting that true money into what it's gonna cost before you set aside all of that money for it on both of those.
Yeah, I like the recommendation.
Well, I'd like to say Keith's five-year capital expenditure worksheet is for the fire, for both fire stations, you have 2 million set aside for both, for this year.
Well, yeah.
And I think that's reasonable, because he said, is, if you if you don't put enough aside, there's always gonna be other projects that are coming up. And so next year, you don't put any more aside, and then the year after that, you decide, okay, let's go ahead, and this is how much we know it's gonna cost. It's gonna be 15 million to build a new fire station. Oops, there goes all our net proceeds, because we haven't saved a little bit in each time. It's just like the levy fund. They didn't put 7 million dollars away at every single, at one time. They added to it.
Okay, so what are you looking at for G and H for the fire stations? How much to put that away?
I don't think 2 million's out of line.
I don't think we're gonna make it if we, if we don't cut it down considerably. 2 million for each, or a million for each?
So what you need is money to get off the ground.
Correct.
To contact people to get estimates, and to advertise, and hire engineers, or your, whatever it is, the acronym for the person.
If anything needed an environmental impact, environmental impact study, if there was any fees associated with it, the biggest fee here that I see would be the engineering costs, or the engineer's estimate for the 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 project itself.
So what do you think?
I, you know, I I really think 100,000 is is a good, what do you think about engineering costs for 100,000?
Yeah, it's a smaller architect-type stuff.
Yeah, that'll get us, get us off the road.
That's what I was thinking, is 100,000 each. I I like the idea of putting money away, too, but i- if it comes back in the fire stations, or there's just, or nobody wants to do it, or you decide not to do it next year, or whatever it may be, I think 100,000 would get us going in the right road. I could come to you and say, okay, the fire station's actually only gonna be 2 million, or it's gonna be 10. I I, it just, I don't know.
So we're saying 100,000 for each?
Yeah, I think that's planning.
Yeah, seed money.
You know, so if this doesn't get real confusing, let's stop right here at H, and see if we can get a motion to approve the A through H on what we're kind of agreeing
We shouldn't do that yet, Kathy, because we may go up and change based on what we have left to do, right? Because we're trying to cut it, you know, and it's like.
It's possible, but.
They could find something that has more priority.
But there are a whole lot to work from here, is what I'm saying. We're pretty well cut on the down part.
Cindy, are you keeping, are you keeping a running total? Thank you.
Because if we move down to to 100,000 on each of these, we've saved, you know, right off the bat, what, 14 million? So I think this is where we need to take it. So I'm, we can always go back and open it up and change it, but let's, I I'd like to go ahead and let's see a motion, see if we can take care of this. So we're moving the Flood Levy Project down to 5 million?
Yes.
And the engineering fees rolling over at 150,000? And then the rest stays the same, except for the fire stations, moving them down each to 100,000.
No, White Knife, we were gonna come back and discuss.
Yeah, yeah.
And delete the Spurline.
And delete Spurline, yeah.
White, yeah, White Knife, we're gonna kind of try and leave alone, yeah, if we could, because that's still really, really active. So, but we can always go back and open one up, but I would look for a motion to. So, um, but we can always go back and open one up, but I, I would look for a motion to approve what we've done on A through H. Nobody wants to do that?
No, because I think, like Brian said, we go through and we cut.
That's okay.
Then we can come back and add.
Okay, I just think it gets it kinda confusing for everybody, but that's fine. Uh, I is the civic center, um, in the amount of five million, the, the, uh, new one.
That would also be a, a hundred thousand, that is correct, yes.
Okay, how about the gravel pit? Can we cut some of that, Bert?
Is that your recommendation, Bert?
Yeah, that's, that's not my project.
That's not Bert's recommendation.
That would be my project and, and realistically, yeah, all we need right now is.
We already turned this down once, twice. We already have a rec center, we already have a ten million dollar rec center, why do we need this?
Because some of us actually voted to approve it.
Yeah, you wanna get into who you approved it for? Your fiancee?
Okay, okay, let's, let's, let's off go there.
Wait a minute, Patsy, I would like to, I would like to set something straight here. I would like to make something straight for the record, okay? You are flat out wrong, Art.
I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I'll handle it.
Okay, let's, let's.
We see how you handle it.
Let's go back to the budget, and I'll let you two work it out after the meeting.
No, no, there's no working it out after the meeting. I don't talk to Judy Allen unless it's a meeting, Patsy. It's that simple. And you know why.
But there's a personal comments that we don't need to have here, so let's go forward with the gravel pit park and see where we are.
So my, my two cents, this is my two cents, I wanna speak. Is that I'm personally not in favor of the project, because I think there's some other projects on here that are more important to our community. That's my two cents.
Than the gravel pit?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So zero on the gravel pit is your recommendation?
That's my.
My recommendation was a hundred thousand dollars to investigate it, to see what the cost would be.
Now my two cents, if I can. I thought it was a decent project to look into, to get the, um, and I knew that the BLM. Had said that they would, um, be interested in helping in this project, and I have nothing to gain by it, but I thought it was an interesting project. So the, to seed money to see where it could go, I would be interested in, but, um, that's my two cents.
Okay, so you'd be relieving it on, but it's.
Not for that mu- no, I would say for maybe five hundred thousand, or be more suggestive.
A hundred thousand for investigative.
That shouldn't run any higher on engineering fees and, and.
Than anything else.
Things, yeah, than the others, so. Okay, so the question is whether we approve the hundred thousand, Keith?
The only thing that, that might add cost, other than the engineering fees, is we, we have discussed. Last commission, that this would require an, an, an EIP, environmental impact, uh, study, EIS, environmental impact study. So I, I have no idea what that would cost. You have any idea on EIS, Bert?
Okay, well, we'll see what the motion does, but, but.
Quite a bit, yeah.
The comments are a hundred thousand or not at all, okay. Number K, industrial park in the amount of fifteen million. Are we gonna look at the industrial park next year?
Well, I, this year, I, I, if the commission's in favor of the industrial park, we, I would like to see that. Start, start next year, so I'm looking at half of that this year to put in the budget, seven point five million. And then, cause that, that's on a, on a much shorter, uh, timescale or timeframe than the other projects. We've actually looked into that, and, um, we've got numbers on it, and we could move forward on it, once the commission says to, uh, i- if they're approving it.
Well, the last time the commission took it under advisement, it was to, um, to give you the authority to look into it.
And we did, and we did.
And we did.
Yes, ma'am.
So now we're saying that we went on the budget about seven point five million to go forward, and we haven't even approved whether it's gonna go forward yet. So it's a real tough one when you do budgets and you haven't approved anything.
Well, well, this would be the next step, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you said to look into it, we looked into it, we have a cost. We're looking at a two year funding for it, so it'll be seven point five this year and seven point five next year, and to, to do the project. So that, that's where we're at, and if, if the commission decides they don't wanna go forward with it. Then, once again, like all, anything else, we'll just scrap, scrap the project, and the money goes back to capital projects.
If we do the seven million on that one, does that put us right about twenty-nine million we've cut so far?
That takes us up to thirty-three million, three hundred thousand cut.
Yeah, and we needed to cut about thirty, right?
Yes.
And we do have other recommendations as we go for, forward.
So we're at twenty-nine?
No, we're at thirty-three million, three hundred cut so far.
Um, that's knocking that down how far? Seven and a half million?
That's knocking it down thirty-three million, three hundred.
Yeah, well, yeah, seven and a half.
Seven and a half, seven and a half is what you're plugging in, right? Okay. The next one is Sidewalks, East First Third Eighth, East Eighth Street, and that was a million dollars.
I'd like, I'd like to see that stay, just to give us the kids, just to walk, to ride their bikes, it's.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, we'll hold back for now.
Straight though, not curvy.
Yeah.
Fresh rock in the amount of a hundred thousand.
This is for the, what, what are you gonna do with this? Are you gonna explain this real quick to me?
So on our, on our roads that have too, too much clay on them. The round rock, it has nothing to bind to it, so when traffic drives over and it dries out, it just comes out. But if you fracture the rocks, you crush the rock, that has sharp edges, and you put it on these clay roads that are, that are falling apart, that clay has something to bind to.
Okay.
And, and it makes a much better road.
So we, we need, is this just for material, or?
Yeah, this is just to have somebody come in and crush the material that we already have currently sitting in our pits, that we can't use.
We have some now? Are we doing the roads now, and this is next year's budget?
No, we don't have any right now.
We have nothing, so this is the first time we're doing this?
Yep.
Okay, then I guess we need to leave it at the whole hundred thousand.
If we could, and just so, for history, for you guys, uh, Winamaka, they do about four hundred thousand dollars a year. They've been doing it for the last four years, crushing rock in their pits, and they've had great experience with it. They, they think it's the only way to go.
Stuff, what's that, the black stuff?
No, 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 it's actual, just, just rock.
So one thing I discovered is Winamaka actually crushes base rock, that they do not crush clean rock, that they're crushing base.
No.
Yes.
I actually spoke with Lauren about that when we drove to Austin last Thursday. He, he crushes the rock for them.
Yeah, I know, and I also talked to Ben Jarrett, and he said, no, we would not crush straight screened rock. That we have Honeywell come and crush rock for us, and we have them crush base.
Well, I mean, all, all of you disagree, but, but so, is, is how they work this, is they charge by the, by the ton to crush? So the last thing you wanna do is pay for them to lift up dirt and mix with your rock. You wanna, the most effective way to get your dollar per yard or per ton is to crush straight rock and add your own dirt later. Otherwise, when they lift it up in their bucket, each one of their bucket, they're, in their loader, there's a scale, and it weighs how much that bucket has in it. If they dump that through the plant with dirt in it, you're paying for the dirt to go through a crusher that isn't getting crushed. So your dollars per yard don't. What's that?
Did you ask Lauren what the cost was?
Six dollars per yard.
So my other question then is, um, according to the orange book standards, roads that are approved in Lander County. Uh, to get a road approved, you have, approved, you have to have so much base material on it. So basically, what you're saying then is you are going to go and take non-base approved material to go put on county roads. Where you're gonna make someone that's building a road in Lander County, a developer that might wanna build a road out for future home sites. They're required to build a road up to our standards, but you're not, not required to maintain that road by county standards?
No, completely different what you're referring to. So the orange book standards are the standards for paving. And that's where you get your standards of like a four to one slope and a, and a variety pack of other things that don't apply to.
Building a road.
That don't apply to a, a county maintained road. Your barges aren't, uh, steep for, for various reasons, and, and it's, it's comparing apples to oranges.
No, it's not, Bert, but whatever you say.
I'm fine with a hundred thousand.
So am I.
Your fifth hundred thousand, okay. Yellow Brick Road paving is the amount of five hundred fifteen thousand, six twenty-five.
That's what.
Where's Yellow Brick Road at? Yellow Brick is one that cuts down from, trying to think.
Faded sage?
No.
Casey Lane?
So where the stop sign is out there on, I believe it's, is that Twenty-Sixth Leaden? So Twenty-Sixth Dead Ends there at Yellow Brick, and you take a right, so that would connect Yellow Brick to this, um, Echo Bay subdivision. Or Randy Clark's Industrial Park, I guess, would be more, uh, more correct.
Right. And we need a west exit for Echo Bay people to go that way, right?
Yeah, it's more egress than.
Right.
And Sheep Creek Road, two hundred sixty-seven, one eighty-eight, so you're fine with those two estimates for right now?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
We can't cut anything on that one, okay. Paved Casey Road to Round Mountain Road in the amount of four hundred twelve thousand, five hundred.
Is there an existing road there?
A portion, there's a portion of existing road, yeah.
That the four hundred and twelve were paved, or is there more road that needs to be built?
No, there's, there, so. This is part of the sewer project. If we go through there and, and do the, the sewer to this, we need to come back and fix some of that as well, so. It's kind of, it's two projects in one, I oughta make that clear, you know, I mean.
You're going from the north end of Casey Ave towards Humboldt. And we're gonna have to buy that property?
No.
We own that property?
That's county property.
Okay, that's, that's all desert right now, right?
Yeah, there's a, so there's a, there's a road easement through there.
Okay.
You know, there's private property on one side, and then, but what I'm trying to do is get.
Round Mountain and then Round Mountain to Allen Road.
And what I'm trying to do is get as many egress and regress and put the paving and the sewer and water all in the same project.
Right.
And that's this year?
Yes, as opposed to piecemealing the amount.
Okay, so we can't cut the four twelve really right now then. Okay, the next one is the senior center paved parking lot in the amount of fifty thousand, um, and they need it. And, uh, we're worried about, um, if we don't get that done for them right away, so move to Old Eight A Road in the amount of four million.
Is that your recommendation, Bert?
You can cut a million off of that one. I don't wanna cut much more, just because I don't want it to run short.
Is this, so we're talking out to the, the ranch, out here, this section of the road, right here by?
From the pavement out just past Tamara's. And then on Hilltop, it would be from the pavement up to, uh, Country Mile.
And were we talking about paving them?
No, this is, Eight A needs a total rehab, total reconstruct. Um, Hilltop would need digouts, it needs to be widened. And have a proper road built, and then if there's money left over, some widening and graveling of Country Mile.
Bert, you know our roads, is that some of this needed out that way? I mean, I've talked to a couple of the guys that are out there, and they're just concerned about, uh. Kinda when it rains, it gets supery and the bottom falls out, and I thought that's what the crushed rock's gonna solve. That is, that's, that was the point of putting in the crushed rock. I didn't know Judy was putting into this, but. I put into the crushed rock so we could put a foundation on that road, and that, that was the, the thought process behind that.
Yeah, I think that'll work good, Bert.
So we are gonna do that, we're gonna cut it, what are we gonna do?
What, does that road, I haven't paid attention, does that road need to be repaved? I haven't been out on that.
Oh, so, so it's a, so it's a dirt road, a county road, a dirt road that, um, it was paved, I think, many years ago, and they, they ground it up. And put it back in, is what ended up happening, is we have too many fines and not enough.
Oh, no, I understand.
Course, um, so that's just where it stands now, just needs, it needs some, some rock put back in it and. I think we just need to do the rock to see how it works, and we'll survey the people that live out there, and if they're okay with it, I mean, I, that's a chunk of money.
Okay, so reduce it how far?
I don't, I think that if, uh, I don't know that the project's needed personally. I'm good with, uh, putting a hundred thousand out of this year for hauling some rock on there, putting a foundation under that, and, and then coming back to you guys next year. And if, if it fails, I mean, I'll, I'll take full credit for it, if it's.
So you're gonna use a different type of material out there now?
Yeah, and so, uh, the only, the only way I can explain this that hopefully people understand is. You know, like the railroad, they put all their rail on straight rock. They don't put it on base because rock's the only material that when you dump it, it's considered a hundred percent compaction. I know that sounds funny, but you couldn't hit it with a whacker or a viber plate or anything else to make it any more compact than it already is. And that's why the railroad uses straight rock to set their tracks on. So when you, when you're working on a county road, is what you're looking for is you put a straight rock base under it, but nobody would wanna drive on that all the time. And then you bring your fines up over the top of it that fill the voids to make for a smooth ride for a vehicle. Does, does that make more sense to you?
Yeah, makes sense.
So we have plenty of fines out there, we just gotta roll them off the side of the road, build a windrow there, get all of our rock laid out. And then bring them fines back over the top to fill them voids, and we should have a structurally sound road.
So you think we can do that for a hundred thousand for this year if we just pencil that in?
For the hundred thousand with the, with, and then the county employees' time, let's charge it.
Okay. Next is a footbridge, uh, three million, five hundred thousand, and, um, this was the money we had in before that we lost to the recreation center. So we, RTC was asking us to plug it back in again. We are not gonna spend the whole amount, but we'd like to know we have it there, so we can continue with contracts and grants and, and try and finish it. But, but it won't be done in one year, I suppose.
So let me ask something, so this footbridge, is this something that's really needed? I'm just.
I agree, Brian. I, I argued this point before, uh, and the contract was, is with the state.
It is not with, at that time, it was, Art. Right now, we don't have.
I don't know how you're gonna build a footbridge across an interstate without using the state or the federal government to do it. It's that simple.
No, it's not that simple.
Okay, here's another item that, that needs to come before us with full discussion, because we are not in agreement whether indeed we are gonna do it or not. But, um, we do need some kind of a commitment to, to know if we're gonna go ahead with it. So if we can plug something in, the same amount, commissioners gave us three million, what, six, five years ago, six years ago. And then they took it away when the new commission came on and we were ready to renew the contract. So it needs to go back for approval of the new board, so I'm saying, um, I'm happy to put this on the agenda, so we can all discuss it and find out. But if we have the money in it, um, I don't mind reducing it some, but I'd like to leave some in, so we know if we can go forward. And if we put it on before, are you saying, no, Art, that I can't put it on the agenda?
You do what you want, Patsy, this is not a good idea for Battle Mountain.
You're speaking for yourself. I have no interest in the project. I, I don't see where it's needed.
Okay, and I'm saying it needs to come before the commissioners, so we all can discuss it, and.
We're discussing it now. We could say we don't want it to come through.
No, no.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, we are. We are discussing it right now, and we're saying yes or no, Patsy. What's the problem with that?
Uh, can I ask a question here? So Ron, as far as the traffic for the kids, cause this was the biggest issue for school kids going back and forth, back and forth. So for, speaking for law enforcement, as far as the travel for the kids, what do you think? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, sorry, I'm really not, but honestly, cause that's, that's the part where it's coming from. Is the congestion of kids going back and forth over the overpass, so what do you think?
Well, keep in mind, when this was presented three or four years ago, whenever it was, that was an elementary school over there. Now it's a junior high. So that changes the aspect a little bit. We, we haven't had any issues as a law enforcement side.
Let me, let me put this, with our existing overpass that we have, what would the project need just to encase that in rail? And make two walking paths, and then you have your bridge for a lot less than three point five million dollars.
Exactly, and, and we shouldn't have to pay anything for what the federal government does. This would be the first time a county built a footbridge.
Now, it would be, correct me if I'm wrong, that'll be DOT that we're gonna, will fight with to do that, which I think that that's a good idea to encase them all the way over. And I've seen places like in Reno and the big cities that they are, um, casing a lot from the kids throwing rocks and things and moving vehicles. But is that going to be a huge fight, do you think, with DOT to have something like that, even that part done?
So in, uh, June, I believe it is of this year, uh, DOT will be here for their annual, uh, project meeting for the. So in June, I believe it is of this year, DOT will be here for their annual project meeting for the county. And at that time, similar to the sidewalk, different things that we've discussed, that would be the time to, to put that to them and see what, what they, the state would give and what the county would have to give and so forth. But that's in June if I remember right.
Because in closing, they could essentially turn that into a footpath over the top by, you know, putting, like you said, the fence on either side like that.
Well, I've seen the same thing as you, Kathy, where they enclose the walkway.
Yeah. In California, they did do that on all of them.
And they use small chain link fence so that you can't throw rocks through them.
Did you have a question?
No, we haven't opened up to public comment, so just wait a second for us here. Yeah, there were, there were several reasons and one is because. When it's because of the hazardous materials that we have across Highway eighty all the time. Well, we got thirty trucks, forty trucks, whatever they had with numbers. We said if something happened, we had a spill, that we didn't have anything that they could just very conveniently use. But the thing that started it was when we had a bomb threat at the other school and they had to take the kids all the way down and bring them across the overpass and then bring them all the way back down. And that's what originally started like, we have no kind of emergency at all. And wouldn't it be nice to have something if something should happen with the hazardous materials? Or, yes, the congestion too was suggested at the time because parents could drop them off, the kids could go across. We also had seniors that live on the other side and they could come over to do their shopping and whatever. And it was just another alternative that we felt we needed for safety because of the children going back and forth across all the time. So when we looked into it, we actually started getting grants, so we got one grant from MDOT. And because we got the grant, they said they could do the engineering for us and help us with the contract. That's how it started.
And how much was the grant for, Patsy?
Listen, I don't even remember what.
Forty-five hundred dollars.
Ninety thousand dollars.
What was presented at the time was forty-five hundred dollars.
No, I don't know where you got that figure, but it was ninety thousand.
Right from the packet that I was presented with.
I don't think so.
I know so.
Anyhow, regardless.
We actually had a couple, actually, and the one from MDOT, I believe, was, was the ninety thousand. But with that, that's, that was the main reason and and so that's when the commissioners voted to approve it and go ahead with it and they gave us the three million dollars. Okay.
County manager would like to say something.
I just, I, and I am, I'm not on either side of this, but I think I need to give some history. And you're very accurate there about the footbridge and the emergency access to this side of the freeway. But what I need to point out in, in, as a fact, is there is another road being constructed to that first exit off of Allen Road, which, that was the problem at the time. And I want to make it very clear, I'm not taking a side here, so.
The issue, the issue is west exit for Echo.
So, so that, that road is being built. And then there's discussion of another road over here similar to a frontage road that would come off of Old Eight A and go out toward Hilltop. So that was the intent of that, because I remember when we discussed this and it was discussed that we wanted to try to make it wide enough to get force, or side by sides across or like the EMS, the gator that the EMS has, things like that. But that was before this road was being constructed and this one was being discussed, so.
So, a little history here, since I was on the RTC from the inception of this project, was initially as a footbridge for the kids to keep them away from the freeway, try and keep them away from Brawls Ranch and Three O Five. And it was discussed that it would also serve as a safety route in the event.
Of an emergency.
That exit were shut down. It was not the primary purpose of it, it was mainly to keep the kids off the roads. And give them a safe, safe alternate route across the freeway.
Okay, I'll open that for public comment. Laurie, thank you for waiting. Did she have something?
No, she's just standing.
She's just standing.
She's just standing.
Any other public comment? Okay, well, I, I don't know if we want to do that one individually or include that, like I said, with the, with the whole group with the rest, since I can't, you don't want me to put it on the agenda for us to discuss separately. So I guess it's gonna depend who makes the motion and what we do with it.
I'll make a motion that we scrap.
Second.
The footbridge on, in the amount of three point.
Second. I'll second that.
Thank you, Brian made the motion to delete S on the footbridge and Art seconded it. Any other discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but can I say something in that, with that, saying aye, that we do move forward to trying to get those, that overpass enclosed for children traveling on?
I'm not opposed to that.
I'm not opposed to that either. That was my original recommendation. It's a piece of cake.
All those against the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that deletes S and we move on to T, Sports Complex.
You voted aye or nay?
She voted against.
I voted aye in the nays.
Against.
Yeah. Aye, no. Yeah, like sign. Okay, T, Sports Complex, amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Here's another one we, we haven't actually discussed.
That, that's correct. It was mistakenly left off of the budget workshop agenda. This was discussed though last year in the previous commission, so once again, it's brought forward. The intent here is to bring all the ball fields and everything to one place, which is over here by the Eleanor Lemare School, to redo that whole area, put ball fields, soccer field, the skate park, and different activities based on what the board would eventually want. But that's what it's supposed, that was the intent behind it. It would be low maintenance, brick dust in fields and artificial turf on the, on the grass. And everything would be in one spot.
So that would be a complex that, like, all the community schools, everybody would use.
Oh, yeah, be over the other side of the Tim Nutt Field.
Yeah, and it would, we would, well, of course, the one over there, the two fields over there would be part of the project. But the fields here could either be scrapped or used for practices. However the board wanted to go, this was like I said.
Did you see a picture of it, Brian?
I did, yeah.
So I, I have some stuff. I apologize it was missed on the, on the budget, in the budget workshop. But that's why it's back on to see, first off, if you're interested in it and second off, if you want me to continue on.
I'd like to see it. I mean, I've noticed some places that actually have these sports complexes and it's really nice, traveling to play sports there.
If I remember correctly, Winnemucca used to have their forty-eight hour softball and they had a hundred and sixty teams. Can you imagine a hundred teams here for a three day event? You talk about filling beds, selling food. This is, this is a great project.
So then that would exclude those fields that are out here, like the golf course?
We wouldn't need them.
Well, I, I'm saying those fields could be, could be scrapped or we could, they could be left in place for practice. But, so we, two years ago, when we had the All-Stars here, we, I think it was two years ago, but.
Three years ago.
Or three, okay. But, but we really, we had to scramble to get things in line, you know, to meet the, the Little League requirements. These would be in compliance, like I say, my vision is five fields. They would have a Little League field, we would have a softball field, a high school, however the board wanted to go.
Then who's gonna maintain them?
It would, it would, first off, it's low maintenance, because like you said, it would be, well, the brick dust doesn't really have anything to do with it, but the artificial turf, so there'd be no water or very, very little water, I mean, just for little things. And no maintenance on those, on those turf as far as mowing it or any, there's gonna be maintenance, but not in the sense like mow them every week.
Okay. One of my main concerns on this is like, I can't believe we can, we can do this and fence it in for a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, that gets a start.
So I'm going, this is all you're asking for, for us to proceed?
Because I want to get a good cost.
Okay, and then we need to get it on the agenda.
Yeah, well, I, I will work, start working on costs.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Yes.
Are they okay with that?
And once again, that would be a three, maybe a three-year project as well.
I understand.
The city of Elko's doing one right now and it's phased. And if you, if you get to Elko and you get to Les Schwab there and turn right over Fifth, Fifth Street, just on the other side of the river there, you can see they've, they've got it started, they've got the posts up, they've got the diamonds, the initial diamonds.
Okay, we're gonna move on. You, emergency project line in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. We're okay with two hundred and fifty thousand?
What, what is?
Okay, so we should be within budget.
What is, what is an emergency line?
It is for projects that, that.
Oh, okay. Money.
Yeah, that aren't budgeted for, but have an emergency need to be done, like the wall in Austin.
Okay, so we've, we've dropped it, have we now?
No, it was two hundred and fifty thousand.
No, 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 it's a total. It's a total, yeah. Where are we on the budget?
We're down forty million seven hundred thousand. We are looking good. That would bring us down. So our total projects are twenty-four thou, or twenty-four million four hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars.
So if we leave everything the way we discussed it, we're okay? Okay, so that means we are going to leave the, the white knife the way it is. Okay, and I think if everybody's writing as we go along, you want to do the whole thing at once or if we run into some problems, so we have to do them separately, whatever we need to do.
Ted, would it be okay if I just made a motion to, to approve as discussed?
Yes, you, you could do that considering you, you did one or two individually that you've already taken care of.
Yeah, we took out.
And I think you put, you put amounts on the rest of them. Is that right, Cindy? All the other ones have amounts on it?
Yes.
Then yes.
I don't have an amount on the gravel pit, so I don't know what, what direction you guys want to go on that.
Hundred thousand.
Well, my.
Well, we didn't, we didn't set an amount on that.
Yeah, I, I said if they were gonna go there, that there might be more costs involved with the environmental impact study. So if we could bump that to one fifty or one seventy-five, if that's a.
For which one?
The gravel pit.
Okay. The gravel pit park?
Yes.
So I would say one fifty.
I can't vote for that. That's a waste of money as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, well, then you can motion individually.
I'll make a motion that we do not approve the.
J.
Water park at the gravel pit, for all the reasons I've stated.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Art made the motion that we scratched J, the gravel pit park in the amount of five billion, which was reducing to a hundred thousand. Brian made the second.
Hundred fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty, okay. Anyway, Brian made the second. Any other discussion?
Ken, yes, I do, just to throw it in there. I had gone out and you had missed this, Art, because I think you were gone when I, I had said that, I'm a, not that it has to do with me, but I'm also a cyclist and there's a lot of people who cycle into this town and there's some really, really cool bike, for bikes, pedal bike cycling tracks and stuff out there. And I just thought it was, and you can kayak and do some different things out there and the BLM had said that they would help expand it. And it's pretty out there, once it's cleaned up, because it was at one time put on the side of a dump, so now it's not attractive. But for other people who, just to expand what we do here and for tourism a little bit, that there are some other biking trails. And like you said, I kayak, so we put our kayaks out, out there and it's nice. And that's where I was looking at it and thought that it would be nice, something extra for the community. And that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Did the BLM allude to?
They would, how much they, they were in last week and they said that they would, there was some, some ground back there that they were willing to help work out. Of course, they had to go through all the environmental stuff and it was going to take some time, but they were interested in assisting with that because they thought it was an interesting project as well. And so that's where I'm kind of biting it off of, because it really is. I didn't, hadn't been out there, went out there, went, wow, this is kind of cool out here. And so, but obviously, lots and lots of cleanup and things out there, but you know, you can envision what it can be, it really is kind of cool. And giving our kids some, one, you know, kids for biking trails and stuff like that and walking. And I also thought of like what Helms Pit did with theirs, how they had put the walking path around it. I thought that was nice. And that's kind of where I was looking at it from, so.
Well, if you look at it from the pragmatic point of view, how many people is it gonna take to maintain it right off the bat? You were concerned about the sports, the sports, the sports park complex. I'm just against this and it's just not a good idea. And I thought it was at one time. I've made the motion, Brian seconded it.
That's where I am. Thank you, Art. I was waiting for you to finish. The motion is to delete the gravel pit park number J. Art made the motion, Brian seconded. Any other?
Public comment.
Public comment?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear a word you said.
I'm taking the kids out there to go fishing too. I mean, it's, and it used to be kind of a nice little place to take the kids.
Thank you, Laurie. All in favor of deleting number J?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and it stays on?
Waste of money, or waste of money.
So you guys are gonna put a hundred and fifty thousand?
Just a hundred and fifty, one fifty please, that'd be good.
We probably need a separate motion for this, because it's not gonna be included in the other one and we decide on the amounts.
So I make a motion that we set aside one fifty to do some research on the gravel pit part.
I'll second that.
Thank you. The motion is for one fifty for the gravel pit. Kathy, Kathy made the motion, Judy seconded. Any other discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we're ready for the motion for, and we deleted J and we deleted S, the footbridge and the gravel park and the rest is up to you, Brian.
So I'll make a motion that we approve all the other line items as discussed.
One second.
Thank you. Luke, we approved the rest of the line items by Brian, seconded by Kathy. Any other public comments?
I think you had your deleted ones wrong, because you mentioned we deleted J.
I'm sorry, what?
When you made your motion, you said deleted J and I thought we were keeping that.
We deleted, we deleted J and, and S from, from the major.
Oh, I got you. Okay, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. Deleted them from here, encompassing all of them together, okay. All in favor?
Okay.
You wanna do that?
Yeah.
I thought he was doing public comment.
No. We voted.
Truly?
Yeah, we truly.
I don't think I voted.
No, we didn't vote on this.
We didn't vote.
Yeah, we did.
No, we didn't.
Oh, my gosh, let's take a break and figure out what.
Let's, let's, I'm gonna, if we voted, fine. If not, we need to. So all in favor of the motion, I said Brian made the motion. Kathy seconded and we were in public comment.
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, and we'll take a ten minute break. No, your motion, I don't remember voting on that, honestly.
I know, we were talking about the J.
No, she was asking about J. Because I said we deleted J, is what I said, and she wanted to know what happened. Austin, you on with us? Okay, thank you. We call the meeting back to order now and we are in Fund Zero Zero One, a review of all grants. Number five, discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove the grant requests. And I'll read all of them. They're under the general fund grant requests. Austin Chamber of Commerce, four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Battle Mountain Archery Club, three thousand. Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce, twenty-eight thousand. Landor Economic Development Authority, four thousand. Landor County Conservation District, six thousand. Landor County Conservation District for fifty thousand. Landor County Sewer and Water District, number two. Three million nine hundred and ninety thousand three hundred dollars. Landor County Sewer and Water District, number two, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Town of Kingston, three thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And the Town of Kingston Fire Company for four thousand dollars. Okay, so we'll start at the top and have you take some reviews here. Is there anything particular? Okay, so we'll start at the top, um, and have you take some reviews here, is there anything particular you want to pull out or have questions on?
When we had our, uh, our, our meeting, uh, we, we didn't have any, any, uh, issues with Austin Chamber of Commerce. We, uh, we, we just don't know how we can come up with money for their, uh, personnel, for their payroll.
Right, and we're looking at alternative ways, and, yes, Ted?
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
We have, we have, uh, you have these one, and I'll...
Just yours.
We have a list, uh, which includes Austin Chamber of Commerce, which is a C-six, Battle Mountain Archery Club, which is a C-four, Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce, which is a C-six, and Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce again, which is a C-six. So, if you take those out, and, uh, just keep the C-fours, well, no, you'd, you'd have to take, well... Let me do this again, there's only one C-three. There, there's one, two, three, four, and that's on the second part, Battle Mountain Town Grant Request. If you, if you keep the C-threes and take out the C-sixes and the C-fours, we can, we might be able to do this. And then, then what you would do is, is you would, uh, give, would give the money, or as much money as you wanted to, to the C-threes, five oh and C-threes.
Okay, um, I'm not real clear on which ones, though, since we, we went back a couple times, um...
Okay.
Um, right now, just on the Austin Chamber, we still can give them the four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five, can we not, or no?
Okay, the...
Because that's not for admin, so we can actually give them the grant.
Which would, the Austin Chamber of Commerce?
Right. Right?
It, yeah, you can...
Okay.
It's, uh... It depends on what they do with it. They can't do anything they want with it.
No, they gave us a whole list, it's in our book. Do you want, do you want us to go back and take a look at that?
Well, if, if, if it's for, uh, if it's for mountain stuff, they can't do it, it's a C-six.
But the admin was separate, so we took off the admin and gave them a grant for the balance.
Okay, you can do that.
Okay, so we'll leave that. Battle Mountain Archery Club?
It's a C-four.
So, I can leave that?
It depends on what they wanna do with it.
Well, again, they came before us, so, so we need, do we need to go back to our original grants?
We can't give them land or anything, we can give them, uh, just a grant for three thousand dollars if that's it.
It's for, um, for their targets.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, and they have prizes.
And prizes.
And rewards.
Yeah, because I thought, yeah, we, we discussed whether we could or couldn't before, and we were okay with that, if we're still okay with the amounts. The Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce, we took off...
We should, we should split that. Because we, we, we could fund that separately.
You want me to take it out of general fund grant request, is that what you're saying? And we'll find it somewhere else?
Well, I just want you to do a separate vote for it.
Well, if I take it off?
Well, or take it off, but it's gonna go back in the general fund, because the money's could go to the general fund that's gonna pay for it, but...
Well, then, I can leave it on here.
Yes, but just know that you shouldn't be voting for it with the others.
Yes, okay.
Oh, you mean not as a group?
Right.
Okay. Turn me, what? Okay.
Okay, got it, okay. Okay, we're all right, I think we're okay with the rest of them. The Lander County Sewer and Water District, number two, okay, that's our three million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred, and the two hundred and sixty thousand, which they came before us, um, on one of our agendas, and we delayed it until we did the budgets and our agenda item. And at the last commissioners' meeting, we opted to, um, ask them to dissolve for the best of the county. And so, we didn't really take any action on the money, so here's the question. Right now, it's in their, in their hands, and they're, um, they're deciding, they had a meeting, um, and it was pretty well even, I think, with, um, who wanted to come with the county and who didn't, they had some input, but it wasn't a general hearing for the Town of Austin. It's just, just their board, and they opted to get some legal advice to see what they could do. Um, I'm... Our legal advice, of course, is our attorney, who says we can ask them to dissolve. That's, that's where we are, we are waiting for their input. However, in the interim, if they do decide to dissolve, we're gonna need this money to pay for...
At that point.
Things that are happening.
It would go to capital projects.
We could move it to cap- capital projects.
Yeah. Um, that, that's exactly, um, because we, we have to have this kinda money. On the other hand, if they opt not to dissolve, whether we're still gonna give them the other amount that we rolled over, or whether we're gonna give them this amount, is up to an agenda item of what we decide to do, unless you have some input now. So, uh, we're waiting for them, but I do think we should at least save the money, set it aside, whatever, to see, so that we do have some options, because they're gonna, somebody's gonna use this money to fix Austin. If we take it over, it will be us, if we opt to give it to them, if they decide not to come with us, that's another full discussion.
Yes.
After...
Patsy, we could take it off from now, and until we get, because when I turn in the tentative budget, it's, that's what it is, is it's tentative.
And we should know by May, when we finalize this, of what's going on.
We could put it back on for the final...
Yes, okay. All right, so we, we can take those two amounts off for right now? And is everybody okay with the amounts up everywhere else?
Which two are we taking off?
The four thousand, I thought we would take off from the...
The four thousand was supposed to go to another, that...
The Lander Economic, um, Development Authority? We were gonna take that one off.
Off, because we gave them the twenty thousand from the...
Marijuana establishment tax.
Right.
Okay, so the Economic Development Authority comes off, and the Town of Kingston Fire, um, was, Pers was put to a different fund, right?
It's still a grant, however you wanna look at it, it'd still be a grant.
So, you leave it, you leave it here, or what?
Um, if we take off the four thousand for Alita, and then, um, take off the Lander County Sewer and Water District, number two, for both of theirs, we're down to ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Okay. Kate?
There, there, uh, in the discussion, it did come up about the Conservation District, and their fifty thousand dollars, how, that it's given to them annually, and it's put into an account for them to use. But in the past, they haven't always used all of the money, so there's still money in that account from past years, is what I understand, and I'm glad Shannon's here to, to clarify that for the commissioner.
I thought she said she was using it up the end of this year.
Okay, so, um, Shannon Bruman, I don't record, um, okay, so the fifty thousand dollars is for the Sage Grouse, um, fund that we use for Sage Grouse projects. And we do have two, uh, projects currently in the works, um, for, where that money is earmarked for, um, where it should be expended, um, pretty close to the end of this spring.
That's what I thought you told us, yes, yes.
I need it to be down to zero at that point. There's not, there's not money in a fund getting sent over from past years, is that correct?
No, so it, what it does is, when we receive that check, we put it into the Conservation District checking account, and so, it's sitting in there, and then we, we have that separated out, where we know exactly how much money is expended on each project, and how much has been approved, and so, and then we track that as we pay those invoices for those projects as they're completed. And so, by the end of this, this fiscal year, we're hoping to have all of that, that we currently have expended.
And this is all supplies for the projects, right?
Right, so it goes, yeah, it goes towards, um, any equipment or, um, supplies, or anything for projects that are...
Paul doesn't get any money for this.
No, not, no.
Right.
No, no, no. Now, his ranch there, the Tamara Family Ranch, has done a project...
Right.
Where they've had that out there, but they've hired outside, um, companies to do that work, and, and, um, expended that, and put in guzzlers and, um, things like that to, to help the riparian areas for the Sage Grouse.
And, and Pulock, Pulock recommends this, that, that we do this, and at the Pulock meetings and Pulock meetings, these types of programs keep us ahead of the power curve, hopefully, on Sage Hen, or, you know, the Pygmy Rabbit, whatever's gonna come up, but right now, the, the Sage Hen...
Right now, it's Sage Grouse, yes, and that's important, trying to keep it off the list, and...
Right, the next is gonna be the Pygmy Rabbit.
Thank you. Any other questions on any of these? Okay, so we're pulling Lander Economic Development of four thousand, we pulled out, uh, Water and Sewer District, number two, and we pulled out... No, we're not pulling out Kingston Fire, we're leaving that.
Yeah, leave that.
Well, I thought we were putting in another fund, but that's separate. Okay, so, we need a motion for the rest of them?
I'll make a motion to go ahead with the changes made.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kathy made the motion, Brian seconded, any other discussion? Any public, gal?
So, we're gonna get to the Battle Mountain Town, right? You're, you're, you're not...
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm just doing...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, all right.
I'm still on the front part here. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Battle Mountain Town Grant Requests. Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce, five hundred dollars. Frontier Community Action Agency, N-WIC, twenty-one thousand. Lander County Kids Club, thirty-five thousand. Lander County Historical Society and Cookhouse Museum, seven thousand. Lander County Historical Society and Cookhouse Museum, twenty-two thousand, and miscellaneous grants for five thousand.
Where are we, Cindy?
Um, if I take away the five thousand for the miscellaneous grants, that puts us at eighty-five thousand, five hundred, which is, um, if you look at Austin, I know we're not there yet, but we'd just barely be over the hundred thousand by about two hundred dollars.
Okay. We're getting close.
Well, I think we need something in miscellaneous grants, so we're gonna have to cut a little bit somewhere.
I'd say we cut five thousand from the Lander County Kids Club.
Commissioner?
Yes.
At this time, I, I'm gonna ask that you, that the, 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 uh, board hold the Kids Club, uh, grant that's thirty-five thousand. Uh, there's, the DA is doing some research on a few things, so I'm gonna ask that you hold that for now.
Okay.
Okay, so if we, um, if we take that out and leave everything else the same, then if we go to bring that back in, we might have to cut that, because we have a little bit.
Right, there, there's another one too, when we get there.
Okay, so for right now, we're, we're just taking it off the board, okay? So, anyone else wanna change anything?
Just some clarification on another one, when it's my turn.
Yes.
The Cook House, uh, it's got the twenty-two thousand, but looking at their expense sheet, and it's just clarification is all it's gonna be, is their total revenue was two hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-three, seventy-two, with total expenses twenty-three thousand, three ninety-three, forty-eight. So, I just, if they're getting that much revenue, I just, I'd like to, if the board's okay with it, get some clarification on that, please.
What was that, that again, Cindy?
Their, uh, total revenue was two hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-two cents, with their total expenses of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-three, forty-eight, so, there's...
And the clarification on that is that that is money that we have received for the depot project.
Okay, and that, that was part of the discussion, but it was brought to me, and I, I wanted to get it on the record that, that that's what it is.
Laurie, what'd you say for what project?
For the depot mining, you see, a project.
Oh, the depot, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I voted was for.
Yeah, so it'll be gone here, um, in the next year.
So, I think when the reports are done, turned in, that you have an expense, uh, revenue and a, um, a, uh, don- other donations, so it's marked, so it's not inclu- when you're including it, it doesn't become included with your revenue, when you have big projects like that. So, if you see it off, and, do you see what I mean? Because if it's included in their revenue side, then you're there going, what do you mean by that? Or if you have it in donations for, um, earmarked for specific projects?
I can do something different for you guys.
Well, no, I mean, just...
This is for us, so we know exactly how much money we have.
Because when you're going, just looking...
But in my paperwork, I have a hundred and eight, sixty thousand for the project.
And, and I had, knew that you had gotten a large donation on that too, so that, I had said, I think that's part of a donation. Um, so, just clarification.
And we have three hundred thousand in CDs, um, waiting for the project to be done, to try to get a little bit of, um, interest.
All right, very good.
Nice. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
No, that, that was it, I just wanted to, because I'd been approached, I wanted to make sure that it was out there and understood, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion, if everybody's okay with the amounts of taking the Lander County Kids Club out and holding that, um, for a future...
I'll make a motion that we approve the Battle Mountain Town Grants as presented, withdrawing the Lander County Kids Club.
I'll second.
Thank you, Judy made the motion, Kathy seconded, any other discussion?
Yeah, what, what are we doing with the Kids Club money now?
We're, we're holding the grant until the DA fin- looks into some research.
So, we're, we're gonna approve that money?
No, no, we took it out.
Yeah.
We'll, they'll discuss it later and do whatever we need to do at that point. Any other public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, any opposed? Okay, that brings us down to the Austintown Grant Requests. We have the Austin Historical Society for nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars, and the Austin Medical Clinic for six thousand, and all of their matters properly related there too. Those are the only two requests that came in.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with this, I just have a question, why doesn't the hospital take care of the medical clinic?
Okay, number one, the medical clinic doesn't have anything to do with the Battle Mountain Hospital. This is, uh, the rural clinic, and the rural clinics do several, um, several different clinics in many parts of the state, different counties. The service is actually free, but the counties supply the, uh, property for them to actually house their clinic, and sometimes they even supply a home, uh, like in Eureka's case, uh, they supplied the residents, because they had people that were there full-time. We actually gave that to them free, but it was, the clinic was part of the sheriff's office, and, and that became a real problem, especially when we had people that they were arresting, and people waiting in the waiting rooms and such. So, we, um, we, uh, we ended up, uh, actually, the Lander County Convention and Tourism Authority purchased the place across the street from the courthouse, and they said that they could actually use that for the clinic. So, they rented it to, um, well, actually, they gave it to the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce rented it for the area, for the clinic, for a dollar a year, and that's how we got out of the sheriff's office. However, in one of their audits, they said, you can't do this free, you have to have fair market value, and you have to rent it. So, they rented it for five hundred dollars a month, and then that came back to the county, saying, we need to supply a place for them to give us the free clinic. So, it came on, on the commissioners, and they've always paid the six thousand dollars to the, to the Rural Health Center, so that they can pay six thousand to the convention and tourism, and that's how it came about. It has nothing to do with the hospital at all, and...
That explains it.
I'll make a motion to approve the Austintown Grants as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Judy made the motion, Kathy seconded, any other discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Thank you. It looks like that's kind of wrapping up everything, so, um, no, it's not, we have some...
We need to keep you here till five thirty-two.
So, we're going directly into public comment. For non-agendaism only, persons are admitted to submit comments in writing, and or can admit comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any. A discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment, they would limit to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner. The public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted, any public comment? Austin, any public comment? Hearing none? I'm looking for...
Motion due to...
Motion made here by Art, seconded by Brian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you so much.